You're now recording, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the June 23rd, 2020 regular board meeting, the Mathacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Executive session of the board was held virtually prior to this, the meeting this evening, June 23rd, 2020, for the purpose of reviewing and discussing contract negotiation status between the board and Mathacton Education Association. Given the need to conduct this board meeting in a virtual environment, the Board of Directors required that members of the public wanting to make comments on agenda items or at the courtesy of the floor portion of the meeting, pre-register by five o'clock today. By way of attendance, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Kankrow?
Here.
Ms. Drummond?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Navarrette?
Here.
Ms. Perdue?
Here.
Mr. Winters?
Here.
And myself, I am here. Ms. Reese is absent this evening. A recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have two guest speakers. We have Mr. Bricker, who will present the final budget. And we also have Dr. Spivak, who will bring forward offseason return to play proposal for your consideration this evening. Mr. Bricker? I'm going to turn some controls over to you so you can post the presentation. And I'll stop sharing. And a microphone's yours.
Good evening. In front of you should be the Mathacton School District 2020-2021 Final Budget Presentation. So to start with, I want to sit there and say that the 2020-2021 Final Budget Presentation is subject to the approval combined to bell times that are called in Skyview. This represents the best-case scenario. If the bell times are not approved, the expenditures will increase by roughly $370,000. Total revenue will also increase by that amount for a millage increase to 2.05% as the new PDE 2028 form will be developed and reflect this and will be submitted to PDE. As we start with, as always, we give a breakdown of the revenue summary. As you can see, almost 69% of the real estate taxes are being driven from the local effort. That is due to the fact that losses that we've already discussed with regards to the EIT income and the other revenue streams that are wage-related and income-related. We also have a significant decrease in the interest income. This chart here kind of shows where we started with. I'll start with the, we'll kind of review it. We started with $114.1 million budget. At the end of the day, we got this down to $11.8 million. Local revenue went from $89.3 million down to $86.9 million. The state revenue's been relatively, it actually increased by about $139,000 over the time period as we went through this. And federal revenue decreased only by about $2,000. Each month, as we made changes based on the guidance that was provided and the information available to us, you can see the different changes that occurred from March to April to May and then to where the proposed final budget is currently. We'll also give you a breakdown of the real estate taxes and how this changes. It shows that when we started with the preliminary, we were at the 30.7131%. We're now down to 1.5645%. So significantly down when we get to the Act One index for where we are today. As we move into the expenditures, we have the salary and benefits totaling about 69%. Debt service has been reduced to 9.8% and overall operating expenses are at 21.45%. When we go into staffing, the staffing, this is a list of all the staff that is incorporated into the budget within the Mathacton School District. So currently, we have 615.1 FTE that are in the budget. We removed three recently at the board meeting, early working session last week. Those retirements will come also factored in. Those retirements are factored in and the replacements for all three of them are added into this. Our net number is 612.1. However, there's also three positions that we didn't, we have open and the positions remain. However, we did not include them in this year's budget as the Director of Technology, Secondary Supervisor, and Accounting Specialist. The 2021 proposed final budget, we have capital expenses, we have the salary and benefits. As you can see, we started off with salary and benefits of $78.3 million. The proposed final now has $76.8, $76.9 million. We made a reduction of $1.5 million there. Buildings started at $870,000, down 64. Athletics is down 41. The business office is up $588,000. I think it's important to point out that is main increase in that is the $325,000 discussed last week regarding the COVID expenses that we built into the budget to handle those expenses that we're going to need for PPE and other items. Curriculum was down $217,000 as we were able to purchase some of the items that are one-time expenses in this year. Community education, as we're not running some things, reduced to $27,000. Facilities, we had a reduction of $305,000. Those are equipment items that we're able to purchase currently in this year, which saved us some money. We actually did better on the prices with regards to that due to the lack of sales activity. So that was very positive for us. Personnel is down $105,000. Pupil services is up $45,000. I will reiterate that we did add back in the REACH program. Technology is down about $72,000, superintendent's office down $90,000. And transportation, due to the bell time changes as noted before, and fuel prices that we were able to get reduced down to $552,000. Total savings on the building and department budgets was about $857,000. Which gives us a total reduction from the preliminary budget of $2.3 million. Our top 10 expenditures. Professional salaries are 29.29%, retirements 14.17% of the budget. Group insurance, medical 7.33%. The redemption of principal is 6.39%. Transportation 5.84%. Administrative salaries 3.44%, other professional salaries 3.17%, social security is 3.15%. Interest is 2.48%. And if you, you can add that to the debt service up above to get the number for the total debt service. Operative and labor salaries, Teamsters are 2.12%. And all that other expenses cost 22.63%. Again, our total budget is $1,111,790,201. Each year, we do the five-year projection of assumptions. So this year, we have the growth rate based on the values as of 5/31/2020, which is the assessed values that we got, and it actually reduced by $120,000 in assessment, not in taxes, but in assessed value. We have an annual collection rate of 95.64%. Prescription costs went up 7.9%. Medical costs went up 7.7%. And the rest of the numbers are relatively the same that we use each year. Assuming we have no property taxes, the 2021, 2020-2021 budget is obviously balanced. That's as we're presenting tonight. Each subsequent year with no tax increase, we have a $2.7 billion deficit, a $5.4 million deficit, an $8.2 million deficit, and $11.1 million deficit, which at the end of the projected five years would give us a negative fund balance of $14.1 million. As we make the assumption, we've changed our assumption that the current Act One rate would be used for future years. So we have 2.6% as the tax increase for 2022 to 2025. The loss for the 2022 year is $700,000. And we lose about $1.3, $1.9, and $2.5 million, which would reduce our fund balance at the end of the year with no changes at $6.9 million. As you can see, this gives a good show of the current fund balances. You can actually see the 2007 to 2019 actuals that are coming in. And you can see the 2020 budget. Obviously, we went over that there's going to be a surplus because this year mainly driven by the COVID-19. And I would like to point out that this current budget that is proposed is actually about $70,000, $75,000 less than the current year that we're operating under. This gives a five-year projection of the staff costs as they're broken out. Salaries started at 46.2, 47.1, 48.1, 49.1, and $50 million. They go from 41.33% to 39.47%. Peasers or retirement and social security is $19.4 million, and that increases to $22 million. That goes from 17.32% to 17.38%. Insurance, which is the medical benefits that we provide, goes from $10.8 million to $14.4 million. That's going to grow from 9.65% to 11.35%. Other benefits remain relatively flat and it obviously become a lesser problem or lesser percentage of the budget. Salary and benefits as total start off as 68.75% as noted earlier. And that would increase, decrease slightly to 68.59% in '24, '25. We'll point out again, there are no MEA salary increases projected in the 2021 year. Going into the major object summary, again, comparing the actuals for 2017 to 2019, 2020 budget and the proposed 2021 budget. Personnel will be down about $570,000. We have the personnel or benefits that will be increasing by about $400,000. We have 300 series, which is the professional services. That'll be increasing roughly by about $590,000. We have purchased property services, which is going to be reduced by about $89,000. The other purchase services, I'm going from 17 to 2021, just so everyone understands where I'm going from. Supplies will be going down from $3.8 million to $3.4 million. Property will increase slightly. The debt service, you'll see that in 17, we had $10.6 million, then $10.68 million, then $11.3 million, $4 million. Then we're at $10.6 million, and in this one, we're at $11.2 million, $11.3 million. In the 800 and 900, again, I'll point out fees and costs are also, it's not just straight debt service in the 800 and 900 because there are other expenses that are categorized in that, such as activity fees. Overall, as I stated, our budget from 2020 to 2021 has a $73,408 reduction from the current year's budget or 0.07%. So what's all this mean to the taxpayers? So to taxpayers, it's important to understand what the millage impact is. Millage will increase from 30.3781 mills to 30.8534 mills. That's an increase of 1.56%. We did not take the special education exception. We are not taking the Peasers exception. Using the median value of assessed value in Montgomery for Mathacton School District, it's $174,280. The increase is going to be $82.84. The overall tax bill will be $5,377.13. I also have a chart broken down below as you look at where the assessed value from 200, 400, 600, 800 up to $1 million and what the increase would be. So if you have a $1 million assessment or roughly a $2 million value, your property taxes would increase by $475.30. So where are we now in the budget timeline? So far, we are right now at the last step, which is the board adoption of the final budget. Again, this will be subject to the vote on Skyview and our call as bell times. There are two options for the board to vote on. Each includes the impact of the Homestead Act. So tonight, we will be voting on that. And as we have a record of all the changes in the budget history, updated staffing, related expenses, added back Skyview REACH, added COVID-19 line item for related expenditures, lower transportation, assuming merger of our call-up bell times is approved. I will say, when I said that we updated the staffing, that included the removal of the Arcola staff, the three individuals. It included the retirees and the replacement for all three of those different positions. And that ends my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Are there any questions from members of the board on the budget? And we just show Mr. Winters?
Yeah, thanks, Tim. One of the things I always am confused on why we do it, when you showed on the five-year progression, I'm sorry, I'm looking away here from my notes. You showed a, a fund balance of $13 million at starting point. Our fund balance, our unreserved fund balances is capped at 7.5%. So what is the differential of why we're showing on Slide 12, $13.3 million?
I'll have to look into that. I did not see that, but you're correct. There is a 7% cap on that. I'll have to check and see what's going on with that calculation. I'll get back to you on correcting that.
Is it related to the Shenandoah 5-point-plus million that is I'm being held in?
It is not. It's just a calculation error in the spreadsheet.
Okay, all right. So if you could get that fixed, because I think it really misstates where our fund balance situation is. I know that we've done a lot, a lot of work on this. I believe the board would all agree that the Director of Technology position is something that we want to fill at, at some point. But we have a situation where we have resources that could fill the void fine right now. So that is something that we're foregoing in the economic situations we're doing. Secondary supervisor will have a new education leader hired this summer. I imagine they will have some opinions about how they want to set that up. So I understand that one being left open for the time being and possibly changed in some role. But, Tim, you could speak specifically to the accounting specialist. Since we did hire a transportation support for you, is this something that you, in an ideal situation, would have left in the budget? Or do you believe it's something that potentially could be permanently removed from the budget? Since we, I'm not even sure we got full two years out of this.
In an ideal situation, I would keep the position because it does add value. It was a position previously that was left open. And it was just starting to get to where it needed to be.
Okay.
However, in the interest of what's best for the school district, we will absorb that effort this next year and we'll figure it out as we go along.
Okay. I believe the principle, I've gone back and forth on the REACH for Skyview. I've been a big supporter. All the board has. I believe us putting it back in the budget is the right thing to do in the circumstances that the situations, that the needs is probably even greater if there's ever a need. It is the circumstances that we're all facing right now. So I support that. And can you mathematically, Tim, the 7.9 prescription amount and the 7.7 medical prescription were the final numbers that we received from the consortium. Can you roughball the amount effect that it has on our unions and also on the district?
So we spent about $10 million on benefits. So that would be about a $780,000 increase. So if we have a $780,000 increase, and typically the school district's paying about 83% of that, that means the school district's picking up another $650,000 roughly. And just doing a back-of-the-envelope type thing, not actually getting into the numbers. So that increase then would be, that increase from the $10 million to this is about $650,000 that the school district has to pick up. And then conversely, the, the members would have to pick up the rest of that, which would be roughly about $130,000, $132,000.
So specifically, it's, it's in this year, it's $650,000 for the district in a repetitive year. That is $650,000. Is it, how does that compare to previous increases that we've seen in the medical prescription last couple of years higher?
It fluctuates specifically with the prescription based on the usage, obviously, because we're self-insured. But I think we're about 5% or 6% last year. But we're close to that. We're in the 6% to 7% each year on average if we go back in time. I think there are some years where the prescription was up higher. That's kind of where we average at, right around 7%.
Okay. So, Tim, I know the, the other thing I'm asking some leading questions here, I apologize. But some of these, the increase from 3.37 millage to 3.58 is half a point. And local revenue related to property tax is going up how much?
Local revenue related to property tax from last year?
Yes.
It's going up from $74, $73.9 million to $75.4 million. It's an increase of about $1.5 million.
So 1.5. So 650 of the 150 accounted for, for the district's increase related to prescription and medical?
Yes.
Is already accounted for in that, in that cost increase, independent of any type of changes related to salary already contractually abided?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any other questions from members of the board on the budget? Mr. McGinnis?
Tim, I know you said this, but just to clarify now with all the numbers are in, this proposed budget for 2021 is $75,000 dollar amount less than last year's budget, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from members of the board? Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, I just have some questions. So we, we're delaying implementing three positions that Paul mentioned. And I just was wondering, when we go, can you just tell the approximate cost of those positions? So we can have a sense going forward when we do hire for them, like about what they would cost?
Say, again, back of the envelope, not doing the exact math, I would say close to $370,000.
Thank you.
Actually, with, let me rephrase that, $470,000.
Awesome. Thank you. And then, so I noticed like a lot of savings and some of the things that we saved on were things that we were able to buy this year instead of next year. But I know that there are also, can you, can you just refresh my memory? There's other items that were foregoing that were reduced in the budget that I think we had talked about. So can you just refresh my memory on what those were?
Yeah, so facilities had requested a couple of new things, one of them being a snowplow truck. That was, the other one was in pretty bad shape. We were able to buy that this year. Give you an example of how bad the current one was, we only got $6,000 in trade-in on that. So that was necessary. We got, we purchased a lot of books for the next year, and that saved us about $190,000. What we tried to find is one-time expenses, items that are not repetitive, that you need to keep in the budget year after year after year. And we moved those forward. I think there were some minor purchases on supplies. We bought some different cleaning supplies that we had to buy in setting up for next year, specifically with regards to the transportation sprayers. Nothing major there because we really don't know what our needs are, but we do know we need to semitize the buses in between runs. Those are the, the big ones were the transport, the facilities and the books. They, they amount to about a half a million dollars.
Okay, thank you. And then just a clarifying question about when you say that the, any increase in MEA salaries is not factored into this budget. My question is then, how is that accounted for? But is, is there no increase or is there like a status quo assumed?
Status quo is assumed, so they will be at where they are right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And I just also want to say that I'm really pleased that we're, we were able to reintroduce the Skyview REACH program. I wanted to echo what Paul said. So I'm really glad we're doing that for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Other questions from members of the board? Ms. Aubrey Larsonese?
Thanks, Dr. Zerby. Mr. Bricker, on Slide 10, those projections, do you see the potential for any of those to be impacted by our current economic situation in COVID? I know we've talked about a possible impact to our collection rate. Do you see any reason that we should be concerned there?
Yeah, we do have, if I'm looking at Slide 10, I'll, I'll bring it up so we can go over to different items and you can see what I'm looking at. So the assessed values growth rate, that could be affected based on where the economy goes and where the, where the housing prices and values go. I mean, obviously, if you're having a reduction in your values, you're going to have appeals, property, you're looking at commercial properties that can have vacancies and dropping down their values. So the annual earned income tax growth is now in question as to whether or not we'll get that in the future for 2%. The 95.64% collection rate is an estimate. I think this year, we will be right around there. And I'm, next year will be right around there, but hopefully by then, we're starting to recover. So I'm hoping as we start to go to green, there's a lesser impact associated with that. Also, when you come over here, I'm hoping and I expect that the, not that it's a positive aspect, but the P's, the prescription and the medical benefits, we're already seeing some savings associated with that due to the fact that people just aren't getting elective surgeries. They're not going out for any reason other than actual needs. So one of the things we had discussed previously was where our healthcare consortium fund balance was. We made a substantial recovery in that in March. So that, that helps. Hopefully, those percentages, because they're on experience, will go down. But then that's just going to be an anomaly where it goes down for a short period of time and then goes back up as people start using the benefits available to them. The other big one I will point out is this 2022 Peasers rate, 34.95%. I don't believe that's going to happen. I think every talk I've had has been somewhere between a 10% increase to a 30% increase. So that would just say, keep it simple, would go to 37.5% to 41, 42%. So that, that's a, that's a concern. I don't know where Peasers is going to fall. That's based on the needed revenue that is generated, I think is like 7%. They need an annual return of 7%. Principal and interest is kind of flat. Special education, going to be unique on how we come out of COVID, so I don't know where that will stand. Transportation's built in and charter schools count for 5.86%. So the question is, if they're seeing the virtual schools, what, what will people do? Will they, and what their elections are? So I don't know where that will ultimately fall into either.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, I guess, be a little bit clearer on what we're unclear about. It's important to know that, that, you know, in looking ahead, there's, there's always uncertainties when we're looking ahead. And it sounds like in, in this current environment, there's even more uncertainties. And I also wanted to point out on Slide 11, it's a pretty dire look of what a five-year projection would look like with no property tax increase. And I just want to remind people that there was a lot of chatter in Harrisburg just in the last few months about forcing school districts into a 0% property tax situation as a result of COVID and the economic situation. And And the, the net impact of that would be, would be pretty substantial to a district like ours. And we're, we're considered one of the better, more, more affluent, more, I guess, stable districts. So I think it's important to just be aware of, of the uncertainties, both within our budget and, and both, and in what we could be seeing down the road from the state. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Any other comments from members of the board on the budget presentation? Mr. Never?
Yeah, I think like any budget, right, there's a lot of give and take in here. And I guess at the end of the day, I'm pleased we were able to end up at 1.5% only. Especially considering where our neighboring districts have ended up. The majority of them are, the great majority of them are around that two and a half. They're at the index at 2.6 and some are over it. So I think we end up, I think there's only four districts that have tax increases lower than us. So on one hand, kudos, but on the other hand, right, we also know that there are some difficult decisions that had to be made in doing this. So, Tim, one of the things that we had talked about last week when you threw up the options was, you know, if we did, if we took the vote on our COLA, on combining the bell times with our COLA and Skyview, and then if we voted to approve the program changes at our COLA, our rate was going to end up at like one point, or excuse me, our tax increase was going to end up at one, only 1.45%. But here we are and it's 1.56 this week. And we also included the retirements from last week. So I guess two questions. One, can you tell us what the details are around those retirements and the net impacts on our budget? And then the second thing is where's the additional revenue to get us back up to 1.56?
Sure. So the retire, the savings on the our COLA change was about $332,000. The net impact of the retirements was only $31,000. And that's because of the different benefit programs and the choices that the current retiring staff has versus the incoming staff. Yes, there's also savings on salary. However, offsetting that savings and salaries is the loss of revenue associated with Peasars and Social Security, which was something when we were looking at that was not included because I didn't have the three individuals that were retiring even factored in that. So the shortfall does come from that loss of revenue associated with Peasars and Social Security because we were getting a much larger number with the retirees than we are getting with the new staff. And that's why, I mean, it doesn't sound like that much, but the giving example is you look, you're looking at 1.5, so 370,000 gets you to 2.05. So it's not a lot of money to make a big change of a point, a 0.1%.
So what are the assumptions that we make on those replacements? What are they? What step and what benefits?
So the two retirees were bachelor step three, bachelors plus 15, step three with family benefits. And one was a master step five with family benefits.
Sorry, those, that was the replacements that we assumed in those positions?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Ms. Kangro?
My only comment is the slide 10, and I'll go back to saying what Ms. Larsonis said is, you've got your basic assumptions that we would put in. I almost wish we had a slide saying the COVID assumptions because I did attend the PSBA on financing and their biggest things were you're looking at local revenue. There's going to be a decrease in local revenue due to unemployment and earned income. You know, there is going to be perhaps an increase in special ed that we're looking at. We're looking at unemployment rates. So I really almost wish we had, and then the Peasars, they did predict that it would possibly be go up to 45% for Peasars. So I almost wish we had a, this is the standard assumptions and this could be the COVID assumption of what we might be dealing with in the future. But I understand we can't do that and the ME negotiations are not put into this as well. So I just think we need to be aware of what could be happening in the future. These are just the standard assumptions, but.
Well, I wish I could predict that future. It would be a great benefit to us.
Yeah, I just, I just want to clarify something that Ms. Kangro said. So when you, when you're referencing standard assumptions versus COVID assumptions, you know, this budget is built around the COVID assumptions. You know, and, but you're right, there's not two slides to show what would, what would be a standard year and what would be the COVID year. So the revenue is reflective of that. And obviously the reduction in spending is a result of those COVID reductions in revenue. Other questions from members of the board?
The only thing I would also add is just with the education component, you know, the assumption of further assistance to help the children as they were in this, the closures and then doing virtual, I just think that assumption is light also. But, thanks.
Mr. Winters?
Mr. Sorry. One last question. Yeah, I'm here. I don't know which slide it is. I don't have it written from me here. But there was a slide that showed the expected ACT 1 indexes moving forward. Did you have an updated ACT 1 index proposal on there for next year? Has there been any guidance given on that?
There has not been. The last one that came out was a 3%, but that was back in January. Clearly that's not valid. We had that same group make a prediction before, so we've chosen to stick when we do our projections with the current ACT 1. I think 2.6% would be optimistic.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board on the budget? Seeing no other hands, thank you, Mr. Booker, for the presentation on the budget for 2021. Next, we have Dr. Paul Spewak, who is with us this evening to present, and I just want to share this. Dr. Spewak is here to present the off-season return to play. Please know that as, as I'm, Dr. Spewak, if you want to start, you know, getting the presentation up, I'm going to continue just talking a little bit to introduce this to our board and to the public. I just want to make it clear to the members of the board, as you know, that this item was not available at the time of our work session. In fact, Dr. Spewak will talk about the rate of speed for which PDE and PIAA have, you know, put out requirements for school districts to address the return to off-season or out-of-season play. And as a result, Dr. Spewak has been working with other athletic directors in the Pioneer Athletic Conference to do just what he's presenting here this evening. And this is consistent with what other districts are doing, not only in document, but in timing and kind of like trying to get it in at the last minute so that we have and provide the, a fair and reasonable and safe opportunity for student athletes and coaches to begin off-season workouts. So with that said, Dr. Spewak, I'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Zerbi. And I'm going to go ahead and, thank you, members of the school board for allowing me to present tonight. As, as many are aware, several weeks ago, PDE did release opportunities for school districts to begin planning for return, return to play. Therefore, given their direction, District 1 and the Pioneer Athletic Conference Athletic Offices and Principals throughout the state of Pennsylvania worked to create guidelines for school board approval in order to begin the process of looking to return in some capacity. This particular presentation references only voluntary off-season workouts for our fall sports teams, fall varsity sports teams, and also our marching band. So it's important to note that these would remain voluntary, they must remain voluntary per the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Guidelines. And with that said, I'll share this plan. I'll give you a little bit of an overview as to, as to what this guideline would present for coaches, marching band directors, and our student members. This plan outlines, and I'll move through quickly, but certainly if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But I certainly won't read the entire document. We are looking to try to receive a program that would be posted on our website and approved for a Monday, or excuse me, July 6th start date. So this would not be an immediate start. This would be July 6th at the earliest. And to note, this would be if Pennsylvania is in the green phase. We will not have in-person activities under this guideline if we are red or if we're yellow. This plan outlines the district's attempt to reduce the risks to students, coaches, and their families during these out-of-season practices. And there will be a return to play for August for the official start that we will seek approval for in July. So again, this is just for July 6th to August 10th for the official start of the fall sports and marching band season. Football would be August 10th and the remainder of those activities would be August 17th. In terms of the groups, we've listed high-risk groups in terms of the adults that would be responsible for, for these workouts. And this would just be for their reference. PPE refers to personal protective equipment, which we list in the guideline that all coaches and directors directly interacting with students would have to wear face coverings at all times. Athletes and marching band students may wear face coverings where and when appropriate, depending on what it is that they're doing during the, during the workout. There will be a pre-workout screening that will take place. All students are required prior to participating in the workout. Coaches and directors will receive from students a completed pre-screening form. Those forms would be completed by the coaches and the directors themselves for themselves. And then each student would submit that pre-screening form prior to workouts, and that is mandatory. They would, there would be no exceptions and they would not be able to participate if they don't have it. In terms of social distancing, this program, similar to many of the districts in our, in our conference, is a document that while it will allow a return to play in some capacity, the expectation will be that there will be social distancing and non-contact activities. So coaches and directors, as well as the students, must remain six feet apart at all times. Parents picking up students should remain in their vehicles. They will not be allowed to attend these workouts. And the indoor facilities will not be made available in the, in these guidelines until further notice or until approved by the Director of Activities and Athletics. Terms of number of participants, this is very consistent across the board with the schools in our conference. That will be limited to 25 participants. That would include the coaches or directors and their students. And this number would remain until otherwise authorized by the Office of Athletics and Activities. And again, parents and community members and spectators will not be permitted to attend. In terms of equipment and sanitizing, students will not be sharing equipment during these workouts with one another. That includes athletic equipment, instruments, pennies. Those will not be allowed to be shared with each other. The bathrooms will be looking to have a maximum of two individuals in the bathroom at one time. The spaces will be cleaned on a regular basis and we will look during these periods of workouts to make sure that doors are propped open when possible in order to allow for additional airflow. In terms of hydration, and this is important, something that the athletic directors and principals, we've been meeting for the last several weeks. And this is a point of contention in terms of its, its importance. And the guideline states that every student participating is not allowed, equally as important as their, as their survey form, they are not allowed to participate if they don't have their own water bottle with them. They cannot share water bottles. And students will be encouraged to bring more water than they think they would need for the duration of the workout. If a student is, student, director, or coach tests positive for COVID-19 or is showing symptoms during a workout, during the workout, if they're showing symptoms, they would be removed immediately. Parents would be contacted by the coach and they would need to see a physician in order to be cleared then by their physician in written documentation in order to then return to additional workouts. The document classifies the different sports as high risk, moderate risk, and low risk. And these are consistent across the state of Pennsylvania. Football, wrestling, and competitive cheer would be listed as high risk. Sports like basketball, baseball, field hockey, tennis, certain jumping events in track would be listed as moderate risk. And the low-risk sports, cross-country, track running and certain throwing events, swimming, golf, sideline cheer, those would be considered low risk. Those are important in terms of this document because our goal with regards to the guidelines in this document is to create a low-risk environment for all off-season sports. So even though football might be listed as a high-risk sport when played in full, given the guidelines that are presented in this document, coaches would be able to create a low-risk environment through drills and through pods of students in order to create a safe environment. In terms of the levels of participation, as I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, if Penns, Pennsylvania is in the red phase or the yellow phase, there will be no in-person team meetings or gatherings. Students and coaches or directors would be able to meet online via Zoom as they already have been given the green light to do. Students can also participate in individual at-home workouts prescribed by the coaches or directors, but would not be able to meet in person in the yellow or red phase. If and when Pennsylvania were to reach the green phase, all sports and activities given these guidelines would be able to begin if school board approves on July 6th. We have listed a quick starter recommendation for coaches. Obviously, it would not be in any, anyone's best interest for them to immediately jump into high-level training activities. So we have some recommendations here for week one and week two, if and when guidelines would be approved for the off-season. And then certainly I can answer any questions as I move down the document here. But the rest of the document, as I scroll through, takes each fall sport and the marching band and simply lists some activities and guidelines that would be appropriate for those groups to be able to do in, starting July 6th until the official start in the fall. And as I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, we would be seeking school board approval, which is mandatory for all school districts. We would be seeking school board approval for a document through a PDE template that would encompass the official start of the fall season. And as we all know, many changes will take place potentially between now and then. But as I scroll through, you'll see some sports-specific guidelines for appropriate use after July 6th. So with all of that said, that would end the presentation for this guideline that we are seeking school board approval for to begin July 6th for off-season voluntary workouts.
Thank you, Dr. Spewak. Are there any questions from members of the board on Dr. Spewak's presentation of the document itself? Ms. Perdue? Ms. Perdue?
Thank you for your presentation. I do have one follow-up question and also a comment. In looking at your plan, I didn't see anything about educating. I know there were discussions about whenever we're returning to play or anything of that. I guess providing information on, I guess to the players and also to the coaches and team about COVID-19 symptoms, some type of education awareness program. How do you plan on incorporating that here?
Thank you. That's a, that's a great question that was discussed at length today in our principals and athletic director meeting where a number of examples were shared. At this time, our plan would be, there are, there are at least four safe school programs on COVID-19 that we would be mandating that all coaches prior to any offseason workout would be completing. And we hope to have that process finalized and sent to the coaches by the end of this week. But there will absolutely, to your point, be education mandated for the coaches. There will also be a mandatory meeting with myself and our athletic trainer to go over these guidelines in detail once approved with the coaches, so that they are hearing it directly from our athletic trainer and myself. And, and then also would have the opportunity for a question and answer with our athletic trainer. But those, those two plans would be in place this week if approved.
Dr. Spiewack, is it not also true that then the coaches are responsible for holding a team meeting to educate the, the athletes, the student participants?
That is correct. We will be asking that the first meeting with regards to any offseason in-person meetings would begin with a Zoom meeting where coaches would be able to go over guidelines for what it is their, their plans would entail, so that it, it's not a, a group of 20 students trying to stay six feet apart and listen to a coach's direction. Our hope would be that plans would be organized and in place and presented to the students prior to them arriving on campus through a Zoom meeting. Thank you, Dr. Zerby, that is correct.
Any other questions?
I just have one more follow-up question. I guess when I was, I was trying to think of a team like the football team. How big is your team usually? Is it just 20, is it limited to 20 students? And then are you going, planning to have just five coaches for the 25 total number of participants listed here?
Correct. For the initial guidelines that, that we're looking for approval tonight, it would only include a max of 25 people in one given workout. That would include the coaches and directors and the students. Now with that said, a, a team like the football team that has large numbers, and Jeff McCouch and I have, have had conversations regarding the marching band as well. Those are the types of groups that will most likely be, benefit from breaking their cohorts up. You know, rather than have all of them show up for a two, two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour practice or rehearsal, they would have to break it up in numbers where maybe the groups would be in thirds, and cohorts of students would be arriving for practices at different times or on different days. Because they would not be able to, under these guidelines, exceed the, the number 25. So just one example, the coach might be able to bring in, for football, as one example, because their numbers are large, they would be able to bring in quarterbacks and wide receivers and maybe offensive linemen for, you know, an hour and a half. And then in the next hour and a half, maybe they bring in some of their defensive players, just as, just as one example. But correct, they would not all be able to be there at the same time.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. Other questions from Mr. Neverett?
Yeah, thanks for this call. I'm glad to see that there's some, some pretty clear guidance for everybody as we get started here. I guess the one question I have is around what we have for, what we're suggesting, I guess, for, in, in the case of an actual positive test. My concern is that it falls short here and that we're only talking about removing a single player. I would imagine, you know, certainly through normal contact tracing efforts and, you know, the standard quarantine procedures that have been established, pretty much everybody that was, you know, close to that person for any of these workouts is going to be required to, to self-quarantine. Is there any consideration to simply, you know, if we have a positive test on a team, to simply quarantine in the entire team and stopping workouts for two weeks? Because we've had, you know, you draw parallels to what we've seen in professional sports just over the last week even, right? Your Orlando Pride had a couple of players test positive, and now they're, they've had to step aside from that NWSL Challenge Cup in Utah that starts this weekend. Is, is there any consideration for that?
Absolutely. I think this is a, not only is this an extremely fluid document where changes are, the potential for changes are certainly there. The potential for, if positive tests were to start happening within a group or multiple groups, then absolutely we would have to reevaluate immediately and, and adjust accordingly. The safety, while I believe that, and I think we all believe that the offseason is extremely important in terms of being able to properly prepare for the official start of, of any, of any season, certainly it would not be at the expense of the safety of our students. So we would have to, similar to what the, the groups, the professional groups are doing now, we would have to analyze what it is that's going on and, and make adjustments immediately based on those circumstances.
So if I may add, Dr. Spiewack, to, to further answer Mr. Neverett's question, is typically when a student or an employee is identified testing positive, the district is notified. And the district is notified for the simple fact that they would need to work with the county in order to conduct this, the, the social trace, or the contact tracing process. And then by having the district identify that and give that information to the county, the county would then contact those individuals, and there would be certain, I imagine there'd be certain prescriptive measures delivered by, by the county as part of that. Now, that is only true because that is the practice that we've been working under, and, and I, you know, direct experience working with the county on those particular matters.
But Dr. Zerby, does that practice still apply in the summer months?
Yes.
That the county would still contact you?
Yes.
Okay.
We're, we're on with the county on a regular basis, the superintendents in Montgomery County with the MCIU. And that's part of the, the coordination that we're working towards and, and continue to do. I mean, certainly I haven't had any since, since we closed, that, you know, for, for, for a lot of reasons. But when we regain or re-enter the open phase, and that's what's really happening here, this is the first step towards having schools really reopen to some degree. And with doing that, we would notify the county that, you know, we are now reopening as of July 6th. And we would, we would proceed with, with that, assuming that the plan's approved.
Yeah, I, I would second what Mr. Neverett is saying, though, that if we do have a student or coach test positive, I mean, depending on the circumstances, you know, if, if the, the student hasn't actually attended a workout and tested positive, or, I, I don't know, I, I do think that it may, it may be appropriate, especially because we're talking about optional preseason play that, and an abundance of caution, I think it would be appropriate to say that the, the entire team should cease practices at that point.
Yeah, I agree, Kim. I think, you know, really, we've got, it's a matter of when, not if, right? I mean, at, at some point, we know this is going to touch us. So I, I think we need to be prepared and set expectations with families ahead of time. You know, certainly as we get closer to the fall season, you know, there may be better conference guidelines on what we should do, but certainly when we start talking about preseason and we start talking about these groups and cohorts. You know, Paul, I think as we look towards, you know, how those groups organize, I think it's incumbent upon you to be working with coaches to make sure that those cohorts, you know, they don't intermix, right? That we keep them kind of isolated in groups as, as much as we can, so that we don't have that cross-contamination. Maybe if we have something that happens on the football team, then it only affects, you know, maybe it's one group of, of, you know, 10 or 20 kids, and it doesn't affect, obviously, all, you know, 40 or 50 of them.
Absolutely. And, and there's even, there's even conversations regarding football where the cohort, the cohorts would be even smaller than that for that exact reason. Absolutely. Four or five kids.
I also think it's worth noting, though, that it is, I, I like that we are developing this plan. I like that we are approving this plan because in the absence of a plan, these, these kids are going to figure out a way to get their workouts in and, and get together, whether we want them to or not. So I think that if we can give them some structure and guidance on how to do that safely, this is much, much preferred to having them just randomly decide they're going to have a pickup game without any sort of supervision.
Sorry about that. I couldn't find my own mute button. A Mr. McGinnis, sorry about that.
Hi, Dr. Spiewack. I have a bunch of what's, may seem like ticky-tack questions, but I don't want to start those without saying thank you. I know you've been probably drinking from a fire hose for the last 30 days figuring this out. And if you're saying, if any of the answers to your questions are, I haven't even thought about that yet, I get it. And Bob, I might step on your territory here. So in terms of having hand sanitizer stations scattered throughout the campus, can we do that instead of relying on the kids? I mean, you know, let's bring the water or the hand sanitizers to them as opposed to having them do that. Maybe that's something we can do and have them everywhere, if, if that's something that's going to be helpful.
That is, I certainly don't want to answer, answer that question or comment by stating that, that that is officially worked out and, and completed. But that is absolutely the plan, is that at every, at every on-campus workout, offseason or in-season, there would be mandated number of opportunities for, for water breaks and sanitizing breaks, and that we would be providing stations for that to happen. That is, that is going to be a huge part of this entire operation. So I also don't want to step on Bob's toes, and those are conversations that, that we'll need to finalize as we, you know, move forward with, with an approved plan. But to answer your question, or, or, we absolutely will have that happening at every single workout in the offseason.
Gotcha. And have you taken a look at field assignments yet in terms of maximizing all of our space? So even the, the crossover of a one-practice ending, you know, 15 minutes before the next one, just so there's no of that congregation area where everyone comes back and picks up? I think that's something we've got to really run roughshod over, which brings me my, my toughest question. We have a set of rules, and being a former coach and former high school coach, I know I used to like to bend the rules. What happens if we have a guy that doesn't follow this? So we have a coach doesn't follow these rules. What, what are we willing to do to that coach?
Well, I know, I, I can speak for, for the Athletics and Activities Department in the sense that it, it obviously would not be acceptable, and, and just like with any type of breach of protocol or guidelines, I would be working with, with our principal and with Human Resources and Dr. Zerby to develop a plan. And I know that sort of dances around your question, but I think it, it would be handled very seriously and, and similar to how we would handle other serious offenses that, that place students at risk. And, and those are obviously the, the most severe, you know, the most severe penalties go with any action, intentional action that would place students at risk, so.
Yeah, I would, I would, and again, I, I know you have a ton here, but I would, I would think about codifying that and making sure it is front and center that, guys, we're not messing around here. You know, we're lucky to be back. Don't push it. Don't, don't be that guy. I, I would, and I know you will. One last thing, we're all being told that outside is a lot better than inside. Any shot at a temporary weight room outside?
So there are conversations amongst the conference where those conversations are taking place. Our goal at this time was to make sure that we had the safest plan possible, and our weight room, given its size, as you can imagine, presents some issues. In terms of this document, one, with it being fluid, but two, there are a number of areas that allow for Athletic, Director of Athletics and Activities discretion. And I think that that question would fall very much under discretion. If there's an opportunity or a proposal from a coach that would allow for an opportunity for us to safely utilize weight equipment outside, then absolutely we would consider it. It would come with approval from, you know, from Dr. Sergini and Dr. Zerby. There'd be conversations had with a number of people to make sure we could sanitize those pieces of equipment. But there are school districts that are doing that, and that is absolutely something that, that we would, we would consider. And, and on those same lines, there are school districts that are considering offseason volleyball indoors. But again, at this time, we felt it was most responsible for this particular guideline that all indoor facilities be off-limits for, starting on July 6th. But that is something that we will be discussing moving forward as well. Weight room and gym for volleyball.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Other questions? Ms. Kangkro?
Thank you very much. I, you know, I want to, you know, as you know, Dr. Spiewack, you know, this falls underneath the Education Committee. So I would like, like Drew McGinnis was saying, the compliance and the oversight, I think, is key. So I would like to just make sure that we have people attending those practices, whether you're overseeing it, you go physically to those, those, you know, practices, rotating through, making sure all those requirements are being put in place. And I also think it's important for the coaches to provide you with the examples of, you know, what the parent education forms look like, what does their Zoom meeting, what does it look, break down to, what is it going to be as far as what they're going to be discussing at their Zoom meetings? And then also like a weekly update of what their practice breakouts are in an email form. Because I think it's important for us to follow, track all the coaches on a weekly basis, and then let them know that there will be consistency of looking, observing, making sure they're compliant. So I think there should be a very clear expectation set with the coaches, and then letting them make regular communication with you. And if you don't mind, we are putting in education meetings in July and in August. If we could do some kind of a short, if you can't attend, even just some kind of a write-up summary for us for the July and August education meeting, that would be great. Because then at least we were showing in all areas that we're following this format and make sure that the coaches are, are being compliant with you as well. Thank you.
Other questions from members of the board? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, Paul, I, I realize that this is a summer voluntary workout, but it does both the question, what are we preparing for our COLA? And also other activities that the students would be engaged in that fall under your responsibility if we come back physically in the, in late August.
So there, I, I want to say that the meetings this morning with the principals, and then again with the ADs, was three to four hours, and, and what you just mentioned was a large part of it, middle school sports. And unfortunately, you know, while we're all hopeful that, that all of our activities, 7 through 12, will take place, as you can imagine, we found more questions than answers in our discussions. Officials tend to be right around the age of concern for these events, referees, officials. Transportation was at the forefront of our conversations today. And varsity sports, given that seniors, this would be their last opportunity, and, and it was heartbreaking what took place in the spring for those seniors. Similar this fall, that would be at the forefront. So if we can't transport all sports, grade 7 through 12, or the schools that we're competing with can't transport all of those sports, or we can't provide officials for all of those sports, then those middle school sports and ninth-grade sports and potentially JV sports would be in jeopardy without a doubt. And we had those conversations today. The goal in our conference is continue to stay the course at this point with regards to our schedules, which have all been released to our officials, assigners. And we're going to look to try to have those seasons, but to your question, it is going to be very challenging. And there's, there are a lot of, a lot of issues that we're going to need to be able to deal with over the next couple of uh a lot of issues that we're gonna need to be able to deal with over the next couple of months in order to make them all happen.
Um, Ms. Drummond?
Hi, thank you for this presentation, I appreciate the detail in um per sport about what the expectations are of the sanitizing procedures, I did notice some inconsistencies, um that some of them say sanitize a ball after every use, and some say as needed or as, you know, um required, so I just wanna see, I just, you know, think we should make sure that we're consistent among all the sports, um that it says after every use, and then to that question, um I guess I just wanna find out, it would also be good in that kind of process document to show who has been responsible for doing that act of sanitizing those items, um and just to make sure that that's really solid, that we know who's actually in charge of doing that. Um, and then um my last point is about the water, um that everyone's bringing personal water source to not share, um and I think the same needs to be said for sunscreen, um that make sure that's a personal item, that's not to be shared, and you know, because that will need to be applied um as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond, any other comments for Dr. Spewak, Ms. Hall?
Uh, mine hopefully is very quick and easy, I'm assuming the uh pre-screening form, it has to be submitted, uh will that be an online form similar to what you know, people are using to get into a doctor's office or an orthodontist?
Yes, our our hope would make, would be to make the form available uh online so that the students would be able to bring it, we'll also make it available, hard copy, um so that the coaches can uh provide the students with as many copies as they need, because they they will need them every single, every single time they show up for the workout, but yes, absolutely.
But an online completion would count as that that coaches would have the notification that it was completed.
At this time, although we we certainly can discuss it further, at this time, we're we're, we would be mandating that the form be turned in, uh hard copy in order for the coach to be able to to maintain an accurate record of of every single student that was uh participating for that day, with that said, I don't think it would be uh that challenging for us to have discussions regarding going fully online with that process, uh but in terms of how this guideline reads at this time, it is mandated that it that they show up with a hard copy of the um of the survey form.
Okay, um and the coaches will be directly communicating to what athletes are allowed at which practice, is that, I'm assuming like through a third-party app, like you know, the different apps that are used?
Exactly, they would be, uh whether it be through Remind or Team Snap, uh they would, they would be mandated in their mandatory uh team meeting on uh on Zoom, they would be sharing uh not only guidelines for practice and and plans for practice, but also how they, how they'll be communicating throughout the off-season.
Okay, and I just wanted to say also, thank you, I did see an email went out to rising ninth graders.
Yes, it did.
From them of the coaches to let them know to be added onto these lists if they were interested, so thank you, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, any other questions from members of the board? If seeing no more questions, um we will, uh that that should end the uh presentations for this evening, I'll turn the uh microphone back over to Board President.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby, um getting back to my agenda now. Um, the reports will be appended to the agenda, um if they haven't been already, we had a little bit of a technical issue with um getting some of our meeting minutes posted, so if they are not there now, they will be um within the next twenty-four hours, so be patient with us, please. Um, Ms. Drummond, I don't know if you have anything in particular that we need to call out for the North Monco Technical Career Center?
Um, the only um real point of interest with North Monco Tech is that they are showing a very inro- um robust enrollment projection right now, that they've um seen, they're seeing some of the highest numbers they have ever seen, um for applicants and people who want to enroll in that program, which is really a testament to the great work that they're doing there at North Monco Tech.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, I did not see that we had anyone from the Education Foundation on the call this evening. Um, I don't see that Ms. Kelly is with us, so I don't know that we have a report for communications.
That's correct, she's not with us.
Okay, okay, good for her. Um, and now Superintendent's Report, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President, uh this evening, I I just wanna address a a specific item uh that I sent an email out on today, and this is regarding our COLA's hon- honors program. Uh, so I'm just gonna read some of the email that I'd sent out, for those of you who are not familiar with it, and then just give you a couple other bits of information. But generally, the uh COLA Power School Portal, and this is again the portal where parents and students get to see their courses, grades, uh things of that nature, and other communications from each building, uh was opened, uh this portal was open on June eighteenth, uh and and displayed the courses attributed to the children uh for next school year, or this coming school year, the twenty-twenty-one school year for grade seven and grade eight. Uh, the portal also identified the placement of students in honors classes, uh so the release of that on the eighteenth, which I believe was a, was this past Thursday, uh it generated a number of uh communications uh to the COLA office as well as emails. Uh, many of you, as board members, may have received some things, I received some some communications as well. And uh it was, it wasn't till uh earlier this morning that I was able to gather uh data after, uh you know, considering all the emails and the points that that parents were making, uh to recognize that, uh you know, we have become aware and are aware of of specific challenges to the process and and the new rubric associated, uh along with the communications associated with that whole process. Uh, so as such, uh you know, this is res- it really resulted in about a forty-four percent less uh students uh being enrolled in the uh honors program in general, which is not the intent of the COLA uh change in the rubric, and not intent of, you know, this board or this administration, so until I got those numbers and could understand, you know, where there there has to be uh something, some review, um it was, it's it's very obviously that we need to resolve something, um I can't tell you exactly what that is right now, obviously, uh I I need to dig a little bit deeper into the matter, but I want the uh board uh to recognize that the administration, I will be reviewing the matter. Um, I'm gonna, I'm trying to set a target deadline of July eighth uh to get back to families uh and and to all parents uh that are going into, for students that are going into grade seven and grade eight, uh to let them know that, um you know, we've we've completed the review of the matter, and that uh if they're not, you know, pleased after checking their uh uh parent portal, after that point, um they can certainly, you know, do a parent review and and appeal the the matter if if they feel it appropriate. So uh while I can't get too far into into specifics of why uh it is a challenge, it's certainly uh the the numbers just themselves compared to last year, and this is both for seventh grade and eighth grade, so I originally had thought when emails were coming in, I was getting more of emails related to, well, my child was in seventh grade honors last year, now this year he he or she is not eligible, uh and and I thought there was just an issue with that transition, but that's that's not the case. Uh, so there there's issues in for both grades, so we'll be looking at that, uh we we hopefully can have a thorough report to provide to the Education Committee on the sixth, when we meet, and hoping then by the eighth, we have all of our communications out to parents and families regarding uh our review and uh any resulting uh changes that are are gonna be made. And 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 you know, while I haven't looked at the data, my assumption is that there there needs to be, you know, certainly some changes, uh so that we have uh so at least some consistency with what uh we've seen in the past in terms of the number of students uh uh in our honors uh program, so with that said, uh I I just wanted the board to be aware of that, uh certainly anyone on the call to be aware of that as well, uh an email did go out to the uh the incoming seventh-grade parents and eighth-grade parents uh this afternoon uh related to that matter. Uh, so if if there are any questions from members of the board at this point in time, I'd I'd be, you know, happy to uh to take those. Uh, Mr. Navarrette?
Actually, Jen, if you wanna go first, that's fine.
No, I just wanted to share with Dr. Zerby that, you know, he and I spoke even at the, as the Chair of the Education Committee meeting, you know, what I asked was even last June, we asked to review the honors rubric and make it go through the process of the Education Committee meeting so that timelines could be reviewed, um to kind of prevent what happened. Um, so we, I'm glad that we're gonna bring it through the education, but I just wanna make sure that the process we include is a balance from inputs from the teachers, the coordinators, the curriculum writers and the administration, and I'm just sharing right now the email that I I'd share with Dr. Zerby, that we need to review the honors and the academic curriculum, as long as, and also the grading qualifications for balance. We need to look at the assessment and the curriculum alignment, so it's key to align with the assessment that's in the rubric. I think the teacher's review of the assessment and post-analysis of the assessment needs to be looked at. I think PSSAs are a big concern, because we don't want parents to opt out, because it affects our federal funding when the participation rate isn't at a ninety-eight percent, so we need to make sure we look at the effect of that. Um, and the rubric overall needs to be reviewed, teacher recommendations have to be aligned, um but it's important for us to do the post-analysis when we look at all of this and use the whole team to analyze it, so the curriculum coordinators, program coordinators, the teachers and the admin review the data as a group to see what the results were, assess it, so we know what current students are gonna get into honors, and then any um students as they remain in honors, I think it's important for communication for the students and parents that they know their expectations, so in September, when they meet with the teachers, they review it, when November conferences come in, that we also meet and the parents know, and then those target students, when it happens in February, that that's their goal, that they understand if, you know, where they are and where they may fall to get into the honors, so also it's important to realize that the communication, as we know, went through the guidance counselors that don't know the students, so they're they're addressing rising students with them, and I think they did a great job just trying to present facts, uh but it's important for us to look at how it's getting communicated as well, so I think it's, it's crucial for us to provide differential learning, promote success in Math Acton, and you know, our biggest thing is our mission statement is looking at rankings, so I think it's important that we make action steps that make success, and honors, in my opinion, has been what has helped promote success with in that certain subset of students, but um I appreciate you doing that and going through the Education Committee meeting, um I just want us to make sure that we review all students, because kids had goals to get into it, whether they were in seventh grade and wanted to get in in eighth grade, that might have been their goal. The rising students from sixth grade to seventh, that could have been their goal, kids trying to stay in honors, those are their goals, so I just, you know, it it was, it's a goal for those students, the parents, and then to even for the teachers to do, they worked hard in those classes to formulate the honors curriculum, um and that's their goal to maintain excellence as well, so I just wanted to kind of provide the overview that I provided also to Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Ms. Kang.
Thank you.
Mr. Navarrette, um you you gave up the floor after that stuff.
Yeah, I just, I figured it was more appropriate for Jen to speak first, since she's the Education Committee, I I just wanna make sure, you know, we got a lot of parents that are gonna be on the phone or on in this meeting tonight, that are gonna wanna have their voices heard, so I would just make sure that we're listening to what their concerns and expectations are. As a parent, you know, you know, when I see that forty-four percent of honor students weren't, you know, re-upped for next year, or probably even higher than that, right, but new students were added in, clearly this should have been caught earlier before the notice went out to parents, so you know, when we look at the rubric itself, it's it's clearly weighted too heavy towards individual assessments, right, one kid has one bad test, they don't take a PSSA, they're, you know, they're sick, um and the way the scoring was, it just seems like a one bad grade really can derail a student, I understand it's only our call, right, so let's not overweight this too much. Um, but by the same token, you know, this is a measure of achievement for these children, and being told that, hey, you were good enough and now you're not is tough, so when we go back and we look at this rubric, let's make sure that we are addressing exactly what the rubric is expected to do, which ultimately, right, is is to make sure that we're predicting the future success of these honor students and their ability to achieve in some kind of accelerated environment, um obviously, a a rubric that takes kids that are getting high nineties in these honors classes and 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 dumps them out of that class, doesn't achieve what we wanted to, it's kind of like, it's kind of like calling up the uh calling up a rookie and he gets to the big leagues and hits three forty with thirty homers and hundred and twenty RBIs, and you're like, eh, no, that's okay, you know, sorry, back to triple A for you, so uh let's just make sure that we backtest whatever we come up with, um that it passes the smell test, that we go back and we say, all these students, these are the grades that they got, does it make sense, you know, maybe we actually should start with the kids that are in the honors classes first, look at their grades and their um their performance on some of these assessments, and maybe use that as the criteria, right, I mean, there's a lot we can do with the uh regressions and whatnot there, but let's just make sure it passes the smell test for whatever we do, and I'm I'm curious to hear, let's make sure we we hear what parents wanna say and what their actual expectations are, um certainly getting a, you know, a ninety-six in an honors math class, and then being told that wasn't good enough isn't our intention.
Thanks, Mr. Navarrette, um any any other comments on that, Ms. Perdus?
Oh, the only, I just had a quick comment, just based on the emails that we received from the parents um the last couple of days. I think one thing that also became apparent is that this issue or some sort of this issue was brought up last year, maybe in June, and I feel like here we are again this year in June and talking about the same thing, so when we talk about bringing it up to the Education Committee in July to talk about it, it'll be nice to really capture some actions that we are doing, and maybe, I think your email today was great in communicating out to the um our COLA's um parents, and maybe following up with whatever actions we have, so this way, we don't have the same issue coming up, because I mean, the influx of um emails in relation, in relation to this was quite a lot, and I think it it's, it indicates that there's clearly a problem, and it's something that needs to be addressed, so when we look at the rubric, I don't think it's just a matter of reviewing it and discussing it, I think we need to look into what other actions need to follow.
That's that's fair, I think one of the major actions, uh you know, regardless of, you know, where the rubric lands, and and is is really the communications and 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 helping set the expectations, so as Mrs. Kang Crowe had mentioned, so that students and parents who have certain goals, uh they know, you know, along the way, and they don't wait, you know, for a whole year to find out that, you know, they're they're not necessarily gonna be meeting that goal, so um, you know, there's, there's gotta be a a stronger uh aspect of communication and and notice through the process, so that um, you know, if if we're, if we're falling, if we're, if early in the year we're falling short of the goal, um that, you know, you know, parents and and students are are made aware of that, and uh and and also made aware of the things that they can do to make sure that they meet whatever that that goal is or the threshold. Um, but when when all this is 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 said and done, you know, the the major challenge in all this is, uh there's a, there's a there's a, the the set of criteria, regardless of whether or not you use grades, which was done in the past, or you use, you know, specific performance scores, or you use some kind of combination thereof, uh the 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 great, the greatest challenge is, uh there is, is there's probably not a a a one uh great uh overall predictor of this. Uh, what I mean by that is, uh, you know, using any one rubric or or even modifying the rubric, or or just doing grades doesn't necessarily substantiate, uh, you know, the end-all to why why a child should or shouldn't get into an honors program. And uh, and there there has been a lot of discussion about how to best do that, uh but but it boils down to uh there there's challenges with every, with every path we take, so so when I talk about communications, um it's it's really, you know, setting that that path that that can make the most sense for the most people, uh and making sure that path is communicated well and frequently, and allows people to, uh you know, stay on top of whatever that particular plan is, so uh I I'm looking forward to making some uh changes on this, because, you know, certainly, uh as Mr. Navarrette said, yeah, this should have been caught a lot early than uh than than it was, so it it should have never been released, uh if it was that different. We did recognize early, uh when we were putting the rubric together, that we would take a number of years for that to level out, for us to get to the right, you know, level to make. you know, level to make sure that these, the rubric numbers and the percentages were the, were hitting the, you know, the, the, the expected, you know, targets. But, you know, that, that clearly didn't occur here. And the, the, the sections or the courses were released through the portal. And hence, you know, some of the unfortunate results were, you know, concerns that were, that were brought to students and families. And I just want to make sure that the board knows as well as anyone on the call. And certainly I tried to make that clear in my communication today that, you know, I apologize for, for that occurring. And, you know, we'll, we'll make this and we'll, we'll correct this and we'll get this on the right path. So thank you for your, your input on this. And that ends my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. At this point, we will now take comments on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. Board asks that you keep your comments to four minutes or less. The board of directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items. Generally speaking, we do that as we get to such items in the agenda. I'm looking at my list of registered speakers and first we have Neil Lambary-Samant. Let me see if I can find you in our participants list. We've got a pretty full house tonight. Don't see anyone with that name. Hold on. No. Next I have Marissa Williams. Also don't see anyone with that name. And then I have Christine Pagnotti-Brezuski. Also not seeing anyone. Mike Ryan, we have you in the room, Mr. Ryan. There you go. Okay, Mr. Ryan, whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Michael Ryan, Lower Providence. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I will keep this short. My question is, do any of the directors have a copy of the PDE 2028 in front of them this evening? Because the public does not. And I sent an email yesterday to the entire finance committee, Dr. Zerbi and Mr. Bricker, asking for it to be attached to the agenda. Dr. Zerbi did reply that it would be attached yesterday, and I wanted to note an important fact. It is not. All the public has, I'm assuming all the board has, is a presentation this evening. Your vote is not on a presentation, is not on a specific tax increase percentage, and is not on a total dollar amount for the budget. The vote the board takes this evening is actually on the line-by-line budget. So I encourage the board members that they do not have an actual budget in front of them this evening. And maybe two, depending on the vote with the transportation issue this evening. I encourage the board to vote no this evening. I'm also worried about the two largest items in the budget, salaries and benefits. Board members are on the record asking for a detailed salary and benefit schedule. And I'm curious, have they received that? This is about 68% of the budget. And if you haven't received this simple request for information to make an educated vote this evening, I get encouraged you to vote no on this item this evening. A member of the public can file a right-to-know request again and again, and they do quite frequently. And they receive their, the info that they request. But a board member needs to reach some higher threshold than this. To me, that doesn't make much sense. In terms of the five-year projection assumption slide, it states that the MEA salaries are not factored into the presentation. This is on slide number 10. And the following slide 11 shows an approximately $10 million increase in salaries and benefits over the course of the next five years. And I'm wondering if any of the board members can speak to the reason for this increase if MEA is not factored in. Finally, along the same lines, I've been curious about the no increase in this budget for MEA, as there is currently a contract negotiation going on. Can I assume that there's a certain degree of fluff in the salary and benefit lines to cover any possible increase? If so, that should be public knowledge. If not, how does the administration plan on covering the difference? With nothing built into the budget for an increase for MEA salaries? Thank you. That's all I have for this evening, but I really do hope the directors will seriously consider the questions and comments that I have made and maybe bring them up during their own discussion on this, on this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Next I have Leslie Nuloo.
Thank you very much. I apologize. I inadvertently checked this as well as a discussion on the floor topic, so I'm going to pass my time to the next person.
Okay, thank you so much. Next we have Kate Graff. Okay, Ms. Graff, you should be able to unmute and speak whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. So I'm Kate Graff from Lower Providence. I have a child at Arcola. And I'm going to actually follow on a bit to Michael Ryan's comment about the budget. As I was reviewing the 2020 to 2021 budget, it was unclear to me where the spending is for items related to COVID-19 in the budget. And by that I mean, there doesn't seem to be an allocation in the budget to address additional costs that will be incurred by the district to address COVID-19. So my question is, can you explain how the budget accounts for the COVID-19 expenditures? And what specific expenditures are included in the COVID-19 budget? These would be for things like increased school cleanings, bus sanitization, PPE, potentially online school programming costs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Additional HVAC equipment, things that we've talked about, additional school support staff to be able to work in smaller groups. There's a lot of components there that could potentially impact that budget, and I'm not able to find where those items are identified or itemized. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graff. We'll do our best to get to that later on in our discussion. Okay, next I have Dr. Malik.
Okay, whenever you're ready, Dr. Malik.
Can you hear me okay? You hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
With regards to the budget, what, what happened to the $3 million surplus or over taxation from last year? Is that, is that going into the budget in any way? Can you tell me? Because, you know, you've got $3 million sitting around and you're going to tax us 1.5% in the middle of a pandemic and an economic crisis. To me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to be sitting on $3 million of over taxation. You guys all ran on a platform that other prior boards have raised taxes every year as if that was something evil and that you were going to do away with it when you took over. If adopted, you as a board will have raised taxes every year that you've been in office. I call that somewhat hypocritical. Yet presided over multimillion dollar surpluses or over taxation of the taxpayers in Methacton since you took over. Two, three, two to $3 million. What did we get for that over taxation? Property values have declined. Our state ranking has dropped from 11 to 65. Our scores are no better. In fact, at least two board members have stated they don't rely on ranking and/or test scores to bank their decisions. It appears that you're more interested in fostering resistance and activism than you are in academics and education. And I would suggest that you change that course of action. As far as Arrowhead goes, in five years, our debt service drops from $9.8 million to $5.8 million. That means $4 million to split between the taxpayers and funding for education. But the goal is not to build a school that is truly needed. The goal is to keep the debt services close to $9 million a year as far as the eye can see. Our call is only 50% capacity within excess of at least 1,000 classrooms between Arcola and Skyview. Your consultant, Milo and McBroom, projected a decline in enrollment in October of 2016 and recommended the closure of two elementary schools with realignment. The board voted on that recommendation and closed, and chose to close only one school, packing an entire elementary school into the remaining four. Just two years later, the same firm, Milo and McBroom, now projected a dramatic increase in enrollment despite a declining birth rate in demographics. They were so sure of their results, they refused to come to Pennsylvania to defend those results. As pointed out to the superintendent, the birth rates and projections were dead wrong. The housing analysis supposedly taken from Montco Planning Commission didn't match. And the board had, gave the public little or no opportunity to comment on the project. An architectural firm with ties to the Democrat governor and to the proposed school itself was picked by a ghost committee whose majority had a relationship with that architect. Now, in the middle of a pandemic, economic crisis, and questionable enrollment, it's time to spend upwards of $50 million and there's no thinking here at all. It's all politics. What happens if parents decide to homeschool or to use cyber charter school next year? Why wouldn't it be prudent to wait to see the enrollment for next year, whether there's a second wave of the virus? And if the economy is going to recover? I just don't understand the rush. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Next I have Kenneth Hanson. Mr. Hanson, you can unmute and begin whenever you're ready.
I'm having equipment problems. I pass.
Okay, it looks like next we have Michael Herman. Mr. Herman, you can mute, unmute and begin whenever you're ready. Mr. Herman, are you there? Okay, moving on. And finally, we have Ying He. I don't see anyone with that name in the room. Okay, so that concludes the public comment on board action items. Moving on with our agenda. I have a motion to approve the suspension of board policy 006.2 with specific regard to the limitation on the number of school directors participating in a meeting electronically, the requirement of having a majority of the board physically present at a meeting location, and the holding of votes by roll call.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Navarette. Is there a second?
Liz Drummond, second.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Any comments from the board? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries nine zero. We have one board action item that was voted on at the last meeting. We'll skip over that one.
Nevermind, it would be eight zero was the vote on the last one.
I'm sorry, you're right. I forgot. We don't have Ms. Reese with us this evening. My apologies. So that was a motion carried with eight zero as the vote. Board meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the special board meeting and work session meeting both held on May 19th, 2020? And the regular board meeting held May 26, 2020 is attached?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Navarette. Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Any comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries eight zero. Fifth go items, Mr. Bricker.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight for your approval, we have the list of bills, treasures report. Our Cola-Skyview transportation merger, which has authorized the administration to proceed with merging this of the student bus transportation for Arcola Intermediate and Skyview Upper Elementary Schools effective with the start of the 2020, 2021 school year. Approve the 2020, 2021 student start and end times for Arcola Intermediate and Skyview upper elementary schools as a result of student bus transportation merger. Subject to that, we also have the approval of the final budget adoption, depending on whether this 11C passes or does not pass. We have the taxes for 2020, 2021, none of which have any changes from the current year. The deposit rate for 2020, 2021, again, no changes from the current year. School breakfast and lunch prices, again, no changes from the current year. There are some à la carte changes. Ice cream raises from $1.25 to $1.35, a 10% increase. Cookies will increase 10 cents. Aquafina Splash will increase 25 cents. Bottled soda will increase 50 cents. Snapple will increase 50 cents. G2 will increase 25 cents. Izzy beverages will increase 35 cents. And Wawa iced teas will increase 10 cents. There's also six master chain, master plan change orders for the front entry. And there is the authorization to proceed with the Arrowhead Elementary School. Authorize KCBA architects, purchase engineers, and the administrative design team to proceed with the final phase of the construction of documentation of the new Arrowhead Elementary School as depicted in the attached floor plan rendering. This phase will be completed by October 1st, when the project is scheduled to go out to bid.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Madam President, if it's okay, because we weren't able to go over the master plan change orders at the work session, we have with us this evening our new director of facilities, Mr. Robert Jones. It's my pleasure to introduce him. Mr. Jones, if you wouldn't mind unmuting and just giving the board and the audience a little bit of information about your background. And then if you would, please continue on to just briefly go over the six change orders. Thank you.
Sure, Dr. Zerbi. Thank you. Yes. I don't think I need to go over my background in any further. I've done that in the past. So let's go right into these change orders very quickly. They're very minor. The first one is a change order for a design change that was proposed in approximately three months ago to substitute a metal Z-Gurt instead of pressure-treated wooden wood blocking for, number one, there is no cost addition to this. Number two is emergency repair, make watertight to the front of the building. And this was a pass-through cost that we received back. So it was a credit received for work that was, we had to have completed during the COVID V start and have the contractor perform for the other contractor. Item number three is an extension of 49 days because of the COVID-19 virus extending a contract. And that is also a credit of 2,700 and, excuse me. There's just extending it for 49 days, the contract because of the COVID V and contractors not being able to perform work. Change order number four is the deletion of stucco ceiling removal from the scope of work. The current ceiling that is there is a concrete-type material over a mesh and is still in good condition. So we felt that it was, we could just repaint that rather than tearing it out and replacing that. Number five is revised signage scope where the original was proposed to put back lettering on the front of the building. And after looking at that, found that the current letters were still in very good condition. We felt that with taking those letters, cleaning them up and then replacing them, we could do that. So we went with that option. So we went with that option. And lastly was electrical. The electrical was originally in the mechanical scope of another project. So we had to contract with electrical contractor to provide electric for lighting for the front of the building as well as underneath the canopy that will be installed. So we were able to reduce this by removing the current lighting that was there. And then the contractor will come in to do the installation of the new equipment that will go into the canopy and the lighting out front. If there's any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And being new to the administration, it is true that you did introduce yourself at our property and transportation meeting, but we didn't have that opportunity to do that before the whole board. So if you wouldn't mind just sharing a little bit about your background with us, where you came from.
Sure. Okay, well, for the last two and a half years, I spent with the Pennington School in Pennington, New Jersey, which is a private school, as Director of Operations. And prior to that, I worked in the elderly care housing at a 1,500 residency over in Asbury Park, New Jersey, with a million square feet of facility. And then, prior to that, I worked with Airmark for over 20 years as a frontline manager and district manager in higher education in universities, schools, private schools, and public schools. So I am glad to be here and looking forward to working with you.
And we're glad to have you, Mr. Jones. You know, Mr. Jones also comes with some background in safety and dealing with some of these similar situations to this COVID-19 matter. He's been a real great asset to the team about helping us as we prepare and plan for the reopening of Mathacton Schools for next school year. So thank you, Mr. Jones. It should also be noted by the board that the first four master plan change orders did come before the property committee meeting this month. The last two were finalized as part of, I believe, it was probably in the middle of this, of just last week. And whereby, you know, getting those approved allows the work to continue in process. Otherwise, we would have to schedule, you know, a special meeting or something to that effect in order to get those approved. So we just want to make sure that there aren't any other questions, at least with some members of the property committee or other members of the board on any of those change orders. Seeing no questions at this point. Thank you, Mr. Jones. And I guess, are there any questions from members of the board on any matters of fiscal? If not, turn it back over to you, Madam President.
Okay.
I have some questions.
Okay, do you want to do questions now, or do you want to do them as we vote on the items?
It's up to you. I just wasn't sure if Mr. Bricker was going to have a chance to address some of the comments that was brought up with the final budget adaptation, just because I think some of that is important to clarify before we vote. So we can either do it as we get to the item, but I will ask for you to take some of those items separately, and I can tell you that when we get there.
Okay, yeah. Let's see how it goes here. I think I figured out a way that we can break it down so that we can get this done efficiently. So let's start with a motion to approve fiscal items A, B, and C. So that's the list of bills, treasures report, and the Arcola-Skyview transportation merger. Is there a motion to approve those items?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Navarre. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Can Crow. Any comments from the board on these three items? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries eight zero. So now we'll move on to the final budget adoption for 2020-2021. So we are looking for a motion to approve item 11D1. I'm sorry, yes, 11D1, which is approve the general fund budget in the Mathacton School District for $111,790,277 with a millage of 30.8534 and an increase in property tax of 1.5645%.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Can Crow. Comments or questions from the board? Ms. Perdue? Did you just, you just wanted to ask about the questions that were raised from the public?
Yeah, I don't know if Tim was going to address that.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Bricker. So the PDE 2028, do we have that available?
We do have the PDE 2028 available.
Okay, when will that be posted and shared?
We can post it as soon as possible. We just didn't know which one we were going with the post.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I think there was also a question about when we look at, I believe it was on Slide 11, where we look at the five-year projection. So I don't know if maybe Tim can speak a little bit as to the salaries and benefits, those numbers in there with the five-year projection.
Sure, I can try to attempt. So you're looking at a five-year period. You're going from $76.9 million to $86.87 million. So you're looking at just about a $10 million increase over 10 years. There's increases that are built in for the Mespa Teamsters, Mayo Confidential, Administration, and all that would then obviously compound year to year, and that's how you get that $10 million increase. There is no increase in the salary schedule for the 2021 with regards to MEA, and that is correct.
Mr. Bricker, I understand that it would be premature to include any dollar amounts for MEA salaries in increase of what they're already receiving, given that we don't have a finalized contract for the next fiscal year.
That's correct.
There was a question also about our COVID-19 expenses that we have. I know that we've talked about some of that being built into the budget. Could you elaborate a little bit on what we've budgeted for COVID-19 expenses? And just at a high level, because I know this wasn't something that you had prepared for this evening, give us a sense of what sort of things are covered by that?
Sure. So in the business item, as I mentioned earlier, there is about $325,000 that we've added in expenses for COVID-19-related. That'd be for PPE, additional instructional staff, maintenance overtime, transportation costs for sanitizing, increased routes, any additional nursing support, any technology items that we may need. It's kind of a catch-all for right now, because at this point in time, we do not know exactly what we're going to need. We just have an estimate. We're also applying for grants also.
Thank you. I appreciate that we're dealing with a lot of unknowns there, so it's good that we're planning as best we can. Are there any other comments, Ms. Perdue?
So I guess the question was also asked exactly where in the budget is that indicated in operating expenses?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one?
I think it was asked to show exactly where in the budget is that COVID-19 expenses captured? Is that, would that be in the operating expenses?
Yes, it's going to be in the business offices expenses in my group, which will then be budget transferred out to the areas that are necessary to be spent. So let's say we had to get $100,000 worth of Chromebooks. We would transfer it out of the business into the supplies for technology or leases for technology, however we chose to acquire those items, so that that area would not lose the funds that they would need to do the normal operations.
So when you look on Slide number 11, would that be under operating expenses then?
Yes.
And so I guess when you look at that, what, how much increase do we allocate to that based on what we spent last year?
We didn't spend any money on, are you talking COVID-19?
No, I'm just talking, how much do we increase in this operating expenses last year compared to this year to account for COVID-19?
$325,000 roughly, 325, 400, something, I think.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the budget? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries eight zero. I'm thinking we can take items E and F together. Can I have a motion to approve item E, taxes for 2020-2021, and F, depositories for the 2020-2021 fiscal year?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. No, a motion to approve items G and H. These are both regarding school cafeteria items, school breakfast and lunch prices, and à la carte changes.
I'll make the motion.
Is that Ms. Hull?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McGinnis, for the second, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? We had talked a little bit last week about the soda. Oh, I see, Mr. McGinnis, with your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, you beat me to the punch. I just want to clarify that even though we are approving of said à la carte changes, we are not necessarily approving of the à la carte items. Is that accurate? Meaning, we always have a chance to go back and nip and tuck this list, and yes, soda is the target that I'm speaking of specifically.
We can always make changes to what is sold in the cafeteria.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay, so then the vote this evening would be that if we continue selling soda, the price would increase from $1.50 to $2. But if we decide at any point that we wanted to stop selling bottled soda, that would be an option.
That's correct.
Ms. Drummond?
And just to further Drew's point of, you know, this is a good time, since we're talking about this topic, to maybe reopen the possibility of the Food Services Committee reconvening so we can discuss, you know, the kinds of quality of items that we're serving to our students.
Thank you for that reminder, Ms. Drummond. It's a good point. Any other comments from the board on these items? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Hey, Kim, before we vote?
Mr. Navarre.
That's all right. I was trying to wait. Can you take it back, then? Can you make sure that this soda thing is on your agenda with Dr. Zerby for future discussion? Maybe it comes back to us as soon as our July meetings.
Sure, we can keep that in the forefront.
That's all. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any? Seeing none. Motion carries eight zero. Now we'll move on to the master plan. If I could have a motion to approve the master plan 2020 change orders?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Navarre. A second?
Second.
Mr. McGinnis, any comments from the board? Ms. Hull?
I just wanted to ask, I know we're making these changes, and I appreciate that we're finding some possibilities where we can. But I know that in the renderings that we received, that the front of the building had the letters illuminated. How do we have another method of displaying the letters, or will it just be not seen at night?
Mary, could you speak up? I can't hear your comment. Sorry.
I just said that in the renderings that we received, that the the lettering on the front of the school was illuminated. And that, I wonder if it was going to be lit, or if there was an alternate lighting that was going to be found for this.
No, uplighting is going to occur. So the letters aren't going to be illuminated, but there's uplighting on to the light, on to the letters. Can you hear me or not? I think I'm frozen.
You're freezing up for me, Dr. Zerby. I don't know about anybody else.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that frozen?
Your image is frozen, but now we can hear you, okay?
Okay.
We can hear you, though.
Just going to do this for now. The answer is, we are not going to illuminate the lights, meaning the lights aren't going to be lit. There's going to be uplighting on to the letters. Yeah, so part of, part of the change in the electrical scope was designed to allow for the work that was originally outlined in the MEP project for the high school to be pulled out and to be added into this particular project, so that we can get that work done.
And that looks like, between those two change orders that were added later, it looks like a $12,000 savings of $12,000.
Is that right, Mr. Jones?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries eight zero. And now, finally, the authorization to proceed for Arrowhead. Can I have a motion to approve authorization of KCBA architects, bursaries, engineering, and the administrative design team to proceed to the final phase of construction documentation of the new Arrowhead?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Hull, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Navarre, any comments from the board? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I think I've shown my hand on this the last few weeks. I believe we need to have further discussion about the timing of this, and more particularly, what KCBA is going to deliver related to the ability to determine subsets of requirements on the different portions of the building. There are some particular things that I'm not pleased with, with the, with the design and the size. So you can, so have an indication of where I'm headed on this particular vote.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? Ms. Hull?
Muting. Okay, there I go. Sorry about that. I know we discussed this. I forgot if it was property committee or if it was work session. But I just think that there's, you know, I, sorry, Paul, I disagree. I do like the rendering of it. I understand your concern about it. But this looks similar to, you know, new construction schools that I have seen, and I don't think this is great reach. But in this vote, I just want to say that we are approving the construction documentation. And I think that there is a public concern that we're actually approving the project. And I just want to make sure people understand that this goes out to bid in October. We will look at the bids in November. And that is the timeframe that we'll be deciding whether to proceed or not. So I think we'll have a better idea of our economic standing in November. And I would like to at least put the opportunity out there to have the documentation done and have it go to bid before we make that decision.
Thank you, Ms. Hull. Ms. Drummond?
I just wanted to ask similar, I guess. I just, I wanted to ask, you know, this is the vote for the documentation. And just to reiterate, or just to ensure, or ask what the timeline about making changes, because we have asked for changes, and we haven't necessarily seen solid renderings of the changes that we're asking for. That's all. Just to make sure that there's still an opportunity to tweak the design and make sure that we're all on board.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I know that as part of the discussion, I think it was last week, one of the questions that was raised was around the square footage of this school relative to the other elementary schools. And the information that we had gotten back was that this actually is going to be comparable in size in square footage to Woodland Elementary. And considering that we have very recently gone from five elementary schools to four, knowing that we will have this elementary school be a little bit larger than it had been. makes me more confident that we're going to be able to continue as functioning as a district with four elementary schools and not find ourselves in a position later on, if there was an unexpected population surge, to not have enough space. So I'm happy with that aspect of this.
All right, if there's no other comments or questions from the board, then I'll just ask all those in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One, no.
No. Okay, Mr. Summers, should we go to a roll call vote?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so as a roll call vote, Ms. Cancrow?
Aye.
Ms. Drummond?
Yes.
Ms. Hull? Ms. Hull?
Sorry, that was the yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear you. Mr. McGinnis? You didn't come up?
Yeah.
Mr. Navarrette?
Yes.
Mr. Purdue, I'm sorry, Ms. Purdue?
No.
Mr. Winters?
No.
And myself as a yes. So this motion carries with a vote of six to two. And with that, we are finished with our fiscal items. So moving on to personnel, I know Mr. Regina is out. Dr. Zerby, will you be covering the personnel items then?
I will, yes. So under personnel, we have I'm having trouble with the agenda. I apologize. There are three items for resignation of a professional. There is one item for resignation of classified. No items for employment of professional, one for classified. Nothing for long-term substitutes. Change of status for professional, no items. A change of status classified, no items. Uncompensated leave, professional, two are listed here. Uncompensated leave for classified, no items. Sabbatical leave, there are two listed here. And there are current supplemental contracts as listed, a classified substitute, volunteers, and community education items for your approval this evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Zerby. Does anyone on the board want to take any of these personnel items separately? Sweet. All right, can I have a motion to approve all items under personnel?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Navarrette.
I'll second.
Ms. Drummond, any comments or questions from the board? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries eight zero. We have nothing under curriculum and programs. Under policy, we have five policies up for a second read, which means they're up for approval this evening. May I have a motion to approve the five policies as presented?
I'm making all the motions tonight, so I'll make the motion too.
Thanks, Mr. Navarrette. Mr. McGinnis with the second. Any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Gifts and donations. We have a gift from the Philadelphia Zoo to Arrowhead and Woodland for receiving the third place award in the Philly Zoo Unless Contest. We have a monetary donation from The Giant Company in support of our backpack program. We have a gift from Spell It Out for the 2020 Senior Yard sign that was used at graduation. We have a flute being donated by Mrs. Gorla and a donation from Phyllis Reese of a five-piece Tama Rockstar with crash and ride symbols and stands, obviously some sort of a drum set to be used in the music department. We have no trips. We have our three PSBA voting delegates. We have the appointment of school physicians. And we have the COVID-19 offseason return to play plan. Does anyone want to take any of these items separately? All right, can I have a motion to approve all of the items listed under other this evening?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. McGinnis, you beat Mr. Navarrette to the punch that time. Is there a second?
All right, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Navarrette. Any comments from the board?
Dr. Spiewack, again, thank you for putting the plan together. I'm assuming you're going to have some sort of communication, any change, any altering, just to let the board keep us in the loop. That would be great. But good luck with the plan and fingers crossed.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none. The motion carries eight zero. So that concludes our voting items for this evening. We have all of our committee meetings and regular board meetings for July and August, which will continue to be held virtually. The links to the Zoom meetings will be found on the website. Is there anything for old business this evening? Anything for new business? Okay, so with that, I will turn to Courtesy of the Floor. Let me pull up my list of people who pre-registered for Courtesy of the Floor. And we'll begin with Lombree Cement. I don't see anyone with that name. Diane Guhan. Okay, it looks like I had to give you, there you go. Diane, you are free to begin when you're ready.
Hi, thank you for being willing to hear us. Can everybody hear? I'm assuming I'm muted.
Yep, you're good.
Okay, great. I just want to say, going back to some old things, since I couldn't call in last week, I definitely feel for the incoming eighth graders a little bit short-changed. My daughter will have never had FCS class. She's getting half the language class that other students. There's now a new literacy course, and as I'll call it, the Level Debacle of 2020, which I know is being addressed. At this point, I definitely have a little bit of a confidence issue with administration. I did, for five years, I've been complaining about the leveling procedures. I emailed last year when the levels came out after the end of the school year. So to me, first and foremost, why are levels coming out after school's over? I can't communicate with the teachers. So I appreciate Mrs. Cancro wanting to get that back into Ed Committee, because I think leveling should be a dialogue between the parents and the teachers. And for the second year in a row, at the end of the school year, to have levels come out, it really doesn't feel like your voice is being heard. I did email administration at Arcola First before I flooded all of your emails again. And, you know, and to quote the email I got back, "They used to use, it used to be subjective, often to the detriment of some students as well as their classmates." I'm not sure what more kids in honors being a detriment to their classmates is. I would like to see the data to back that up. I think going forward, trying to improve the leveling process, it goes back to a philosophy. We had to add this literacy course. I know people are saying it's not based on PS to say, but yet all the data was about PS to say. I go back to the fact that I see two things we really need to do that are kind of free. Looking at the curriculum, and again, looking at pushing students. I get that there need to be standards in leveling. I level 150 kids a year. I get that we don't want kids in over their heads. But I don't understand how this rubric even got through. So I'm having a confidence issue with that. I don't understand how it was published. So I appreciate that Dr. Zerby said it was a major oversight. But just taking a look at the rubric, you get a zero out of four on the rubric if you have an 85% test average. That should have been a red flag. The AR testing program, which I've complained about for five years, is a large component, and so on and so forth. So I, you know, going forth to the high school from eighth to ninth, you need a 90 to stay in honors in some classes, 93 in some other classes, 83 in some others. I would really like with the new curriculum director, a comprehensive review of curriculum and leveling procedures. So thank you. I'm trying to talk fast because I know it's late. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guahan. Let's see, next we have, I have Lauren Carr, who I don't see. And then I have Lori Decker, who I also don't see. And then we have Carol Lefrida. Ms. Lefrida, you are in the room, so you can start whenever you are ready. Ms. Lefrida, are you there? Okay. Next, I have Christine Pagnotti, who I believe is also not here. Marian Barbosa. Was not there. Leslie Nulow.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time tonight. I know this meeting is extended. I just wanted to express gratefulness that the issue was addressed prior to the board meeting, that this will be reevaluated. But one of the things that I did not hear from the board members or administration was that there would be more transparency for the parents to understand, regardless of what the rubric is, regardless of what the new standards are. I think the best way to avoid a flood of emails would be to provide us with the information about our children. Whatever the rubric is, seeing our children's scores would be very helpful for us to understand where our children are either not meeting the standard or just missing the standard, so we can know how to help them and how to goal set. That's my primary concern going forward, is that there be better transparency to why the decision was made about our students and access to that information. Surely, there's a means by which to do that with all the electronic capabilities that we have, either with Power School or other means of sharing that info. And thank you very much for looking into this. I appreciate your time and good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Nulow. Next on our list, we have Robert Guhan. Okay, Mr. Guhan, whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much for allowing me time to speak. First, I'd like to say thank you very much for looking at and addressing the rubric. First, for those that have planned out the rubric, it was clear that there was a lot of time and energy spent to creating such a rubric. I was in the military for 21 years, and we live by execution matrices, which is same. And the one thing I could say is, simple is better. This rubric is very complex. And the more complex you make something, the easier it is to stop it up. The simple things, I've also been a teacher now for nearly 20 some odd years. When I do the leveling, I've taught at seventh grade. I have taught at ninth grade and 10th grade. When I make my recommendations for leveling, I base it on student performance and subjectivity, which was something you were trying to take out using the rubric to make it more objective. But that's the role of the teacher, to know the student, to make the recommendation, and include parents. When I make my recommendations, I make them by the third marking period with the parent and the child. I meet with every single one of my students. I make the time to do it and discuss what level they should be, an appropriate level for them. And the parents are involved in every step, which was something I did not see in this process, which is very concerning. The appeals process to the very complex matrix was also troubling, a cold right. Again, now you went from being objective, using a matrix and trying to use mathematics, and now you're going back to subjective. You should have started that from the beginning. Teachers should make the call with the student's performance and the grades. Also, based upon your rubric, it sounds like you don't have confidence in your own grade scale. It's across the board. I don't know where your numbers lie. If a student has an A or a high B in a class, that means they're showing mastery, and they should be in the honors level classes. So when you're readdressing all of this, please keep it simple. Please use teacher input, and please do not make it, it should be transparent to the parents as well as the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guhan. Next, we have Janine Darby. Don't see Dr. Darby in the list. Okay. Now we have Jim Mollick.
Has this hear me okay?
Yeah. I can hear you.
Got it? All right. I appreciate Robert's comments. I'm not a teacher, and what he says makes a lot of sense. I think you probably should consider it. Could you tell me, Monco is going into the green phase on June 25. What's the rationale for virtual meetings through August? Is there like any kind of rationale for doing that? Are you guys just like doing virtual meetings? Can you tell me? Are you using any science based on making that decision? Because sunlight and fresh air kills the virus pretty much instantly. The mortality rate for individuals who are under the age of 70 and no risk factors is low. Mortality rate for kids in the 0 to 17 age range is essentially zero. So I'm not sure what you're trying to accomplish by having virtual meetings, other than maybe you like it. Montgomery County, I just attended one of their meetings. They have public comment in their building. Worcester Township just had a meeting at your high school where I gave public comment. So Monco's doing it, Worcester's doing it. I don't understand why you guys aren't doing it. If you can give me an explanation, it'd be good. You know, and the same rationale goes towards your sports program. And I heard somebody saying you should clean the ball off every time you use it, or whatever. Well, contact, virus is not spread by contact. It's been shown, it's very rare for the virus to spread by contact, and it's rare to spread by an asymptomatic person as well. So all you got to do is make sure that nobody comes there sick, because the 0 to 17-year-olds aren't going to have a problem. So again, you know, I don't know what kind of thinking's being employed there, but, you know, I think you guys are like overreacting a little bit. Has Board Policy 707 changed? Because I printed it out about two weeks ago. It looks like it's different. Do you know of a change in the policy at all? Because I guess one of the reasons I ask is, you seem to think it's okay for, you know, a group of 100 to 200 people to get together for a protest, but you won't let 25 people in the building for a meeting? So, because that's what you said last time, you're concerned about having the meeting be over 25 people. Well, you weren't concerned about 200 people in a protest for something I guess you believe in. So, you know, I believe in, you know, I believe in having meetings. The school, it's my understanding, the school district is closed, and so are the offices. And your guys won't process right-to-know requests, but you'll process an application for a protest. Can you tell me how that works out? I guess people's right to know isn't important, but a cause you support is important? Can you straighten me out on that one a little bit? And what's the status of the Reese investigation? You know, somebody made a complaint to the board here a couple months back about some alleged comments about egging people's homes. And I don't hear anything going on. I don't know whether there's an investigation, whether you took the complaint seriously. Are you investigating the allegation? Can you tell me that? Do you want to investigate the allegation?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mollick. Next, we have Kenneth Hansen. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Hansen.
I pass. I'm having equipment problems. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Cara LaFrida, it looks like you're raising your hand now. I think we missed you earlier in the evening. So I'm gonna put you in now. You can unmute and start whenever you're ready.
Hi, I'm sorry. I was having technical difficulties.
That's okay. Thanks for circling back with us.
Yes. I have an upcoming eighth grader and an upcoming sixth grader. And I, like many other parents, were disappointed and frustrated to hear the many changes coming to our Cola next year from the cutting of FCS to lessening the foreign language program time. If improving our reading program is that much of an issue, I would think increasing the curriculum at the elementary level would actually make more sense than making that change in seventh and eighth grade, where at that point, you actually have students in honors reading classes. I don't think increasing the reading program at our Cola should be a one-size-fits-all philosophy. I think that decision was rushed through and made not thinking about these eighth graders, who unfortunately will bear the brunt of all these changes. They will now go into ninth grade with basically half a year of a foreign language, and let's not forget, some of that may very well be virtual. That leads me into the honors program requirement changes. I echo Mrs. Kankrow and Mr. Navarette's sentiments. I, like many other parents and children, went on the Power School this week and were shocked and confused when we saw that my daughter wasn't assigned any honors classes after being in three of them this year. As a parent of a child whose lowest average was a 93%, I was very confused. I can vividly remember hearing the requirements needed back in September from her teachers at back-to-school night. Everyone knew the expectations and goals. She worked very hard to reach them during the year. Yet now, we all learned about the rubric that was implemented in late November 2019, after the first marking period had already ended, notified via a Math Acton School District generic email. Nothing specific notifying our Cola parents or the honors students of the major change of requirements, even in Dr. Mangiano's monthly newsletters. I'm sorry, but this does not sound like a great way to roll out a change in your honors program with the implementation of this rubric. It's very lacking. It doesn't allow much room for error. A bad day, a tough concept, the student doesn't understand. And let's remember, we have the pandemic this year, so they base this mostly on only two assessments. Are we teaching our kids that they need to be perfect in all areas all the time? Is this really the message we want to send to our students? I would think the student's grade average for the year in that class would be a much better indication of their performance than a rubric, along with teacher recommendations. This isn't supposed to be the challenger gifted program. It also isn't college, where they give students a syllabus at the beginning of the year, and you know two grades that drastically are going to affect your grade. It's seventh and eighth grade. Like, what is our goal here? Obviously, with only 44% of the students, the honors students remaining in honors class, that obviously shows a major problem. Unfortunately, you confuse, disappointed, and let down many young teenage minds who were eager and motivated during the school year to work hard because they cared and wanted to stay in honors classes. Well, now they think their A average wasn't good enough. What does that do for their confidence and drive to succeed? I'm sorry, but this has been a huge disappointment coming off the heels of a pandemic and virtual schooling. Between the changes to FCS, language time being cut, and now this, it seems the timing for all these changes affecting these upcoming eighth graders specifically are really very unfortunate. If you wanted to make these changes for the incoming seventh graders, so be it. But at least everyone be on the same page at the start of the school year. I appreciate the board members who replied to my email personally on this matter. I hope you all, along with Dr. Zerby and Dr. Mangiano, can reevaluate the process and take into consideration our children and how they've been directly affected by these changes. Thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you, Ms. LaFrida. And next, I have Marissa Rocco. Ms. Rocco, you're in. Whenever you're ready.
Yes, hi. Well, gosh, Cara said a lot of that really well. And I just want to reiterate the disappointment, and I'm really happy that the board and Dr. Zerby addressed it tonight and this afternoon by way of email. I think one of my biggest concerns was not only the fact that this email came out in a generic Math Acton School District email as opposed to a title that involves something around the honors placement, that it came out when it did, after the first marking period. And when we all went to back-to-school night and heard, if your kids are in honors classes and maintain a 93, they will remain in honors. If they strive towards honors the following year, they should be aiming for a 95 or better. So we, as parents, hear that. We share that with our students. Our students hear it from our teachers. They set goals for themselves, and these are what they were working towards. So to check Power School the other day to find out that most of these students were affected, and when I say most, every single person that I have talked to, children were affected by this. For, as we heard tonight, 44% is a huge number. That's a huge concern. One of the other things around this is, why did the rubric change? What was the change for? I know one friend spoke to one of the counselors directly, and I spoke with one of the counselors directly. And I can't get an answer on why we're changing the process. What was the need for it? Do we want less kids in honors? And if so, why have an honors program? Neighboring districts don't have it for middle school, at least two of the districts that I'm familiar with. And to be told by the counselors, well, this, keep in mind, this doesn't affect your honors placement for high school, and which I understand that it does affect it from seventh to eighth grade or from sixth to seventh. So then why even have it? I think that's what I'd like to hear and why the changes were implemented. And that comes around the transparency that others spoke about. Another big concern I had with this, my child was asked to take a placement test for honors pre-algebra. So children are selected for honors algebra. They take a placement test. Then they go down the list to pre-algebra. She missed on what the rubric that was required to get an honors pre-algebra. She was off by one point. At no time when I talked to the math specialist about this, did she tell me by not placing her in honors pre-algebra, because I did have the chance to appeal and/or push to have her in honors pre-algebra, which in hindsight, I should have because it was simply too easy, and now she's moving up next year. And now I have my concerns around moving up after a virtual learning environment for three months. But let me back up. At no time during those conversations with the math specialist was it told to me, your daughter's honors science could be affected by not being in honors pre-algebra. If you look at the rubric, there is no way to remain in honors science or get in honors science the following year if you're not in honors pre-algebra or algebra. And to me, that's absurd, that that wasn't brought to anyone's attention, and that that's even a qualifier. My other concern, so I'm trying to look at my notes. Okay, I think I covered all of that. On a positive note, I could not be happier about the bus merger with Skyview and Arcola. I think there's many benefits to all parents, working parents, non-working parents, having your kids on a schedule the same that are in both schools. And with the COVID crisis, having more siblings that can ride a bus together. Because certainly, when you're covering two schools, you have more of a chance of siblings being together that could sit together. So thank you for that. I never understood why we had two different start times, and I know the cost savings is roughly $400,000. And I think there's many positive outcomes to that. So thank you for that. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Rocco. Okay, and then finally, I have Michael Herman. Okay, Mr. Herman, whenever you're ready.
Hi. This is actually Janice Herman.
Okay.
I was just wondering, with all the discussion, and I've sent a couple of letters to you about the Arrowhead Forward project, why there hasn't been anything sent out to the community as you had done earlier in later 2019, I think something was sent out. But you've been sort of silent since then. And most people that I talk to that don't have children in a school are completely unaware that you are considering building a new elementary school. So I am asking, imploring you to please get some information out to the community so that they know what's going on. Especially since you keep having these Zoom meetings, which I think for a lot of people are a little intimidating to attend, a little intimidating to speak on, and for some, just impossible to handle. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I believe that takes us to the end of our list. I did want to just respond to a couple of issues that were raised. Obviously, as we discussed earlier in this meeting, we are going to be looking into the honors rubric. I think that we've gotten plenty of good feedback on direction on where we should be going with this. And I would advise everyone to just look forward to further communication coming from Dr. Zerby in the next few weeks. There was questions raised about the rationale for virtual meetings, which I do believe I answered last week, but I'll reiterate again that even as the county moves into the green phase, that the guidance has been that we limit public gatherings, indoor gatherings, as much as possible. Making connections or making a comparison between our board and the board of supervisors for a township is not a good comparison. We're a board of nine, they're a board of three. You look at the number of people that are on this call this evening. We would be put in a position where I would worry that we would have people not attending meetings because of concerns for their health. I would be concerned we'd have to limit attendance at meetings, which I don't want to do. And quite frankly, over the last three months of having these Zoom meetings, we have seen attendance and participation in board meetings unlike anything I have seen in the last five years. So I would challenge that this has not discouraged participation at all, and I think it actually has encouraged it and has gotten more people paying attention to what's going on in our district, more people commenting, more people sharing. I think that we've got better community engagement right now. So to me, that's a silver lining that has come out of this whole COVID situation. As far as Policy 707, that policy has not changed. The last modified date for the policy should be listed at the top of the policy in our policy handbook. And the Reese investigation that was alluded to, there is no investigation. There is nothing to investigate. There's comments were made prior to the start of a meeting. There's nothing more to it. So that's all I have. Does anyone else have anything before we wrap up? Mr. Navarette.
Yeah, thanks, Kim. I just, I note on our virtual meetings, and I guess, you know, I used to be the expert here. I call it from all over the world, but I'll just echo the point I've heard from a lot of people in the community, parents and non-parents alike, that are actually thankful that we are having these meetings virtually and that they are attending. And I think, you know, we see it every week at the numbers in the attendees list, and I would, you know, as we go forward, I guess I applaud our effort to keep everybody safe and encourage as much participation as possible, because that's honestly what this is all about, right? Makes for better local government. And the last thing I'll note is that I do not believe that the mortality rate of our attendees should be a factor that we use in deciding whether or not to hold meetings.
I agree wholeheartedly. Any other comments from the board before we adjourn? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn then.
I made a motion tonight. Can I make a motion?
Oh, I beat them.
Navarette with the second. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.